Second. Kristen and I shop in the same store. We've got the same shirt on. No, I was not. Yeah. Problem. Ready to go.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our City of Powell River Council's Committee of the Whole meeting for Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. I honor that we're holding this meeting on the traditional territory of the Klauhman Nation. I also want to honor something else. And that is that we we are, those of us sitting at this table and everyone in this room, are engaging in processes that have been in development since what I would call ancient times. Western democracy, the kind that we practice, has been in development for a millennium. And it is based in traditions that go back and practices that go back probably 2,500 years to ancient Greece, what we call ancient Greece. So these are traditions that are rooted very deeply in our culture. But democracy is delicate. And it is founded, or its foundation is on two things, as I see it. One is respect, and the other one is actually trust. There is a great trust invested in the seven people that sit at this table. And by extension, there's a trust in the people who work for this city. There is also a trust expected of anyone who engages in this process here. Part of the ability to keep that trust is something I mentioned a few weeks ago when I was sitting in this chair, and that is a section of the community charter that allows the presiding member, which happens to be me today, to maintain order. And that means that we don't welcome any kind of cheering, whether it's applause or booing or anything like that. Yeah. So just one final comment, and that is that this is a meeting of this group. It is a council meeting, and we invite people to present to us. So with those comments, and especially getting back to the foundation of respect, I really wanted to honor that because of the foundation, which is ancient and yet delicate, that we that we engage in here. Thank you for indulging me in listening to my comments. With that, I'll move to adoption of the agenda. And we have an agenda before, if any changes, additions, deletions, seeing none. Counselor Palm moved to adopt second. Counselor Isaacson, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Onto adoption of the minutes, minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held April 16. We've no doubt had a chance to look at those, move for adoption. Counselor Isaacson, second. Counselor Elliott, any comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous, carried. Onto delegations, three, one. Roger Whitaker regarding free speech. Mr. Whitaker. I'll just mention that delegations have 10 minutes to present, and there's a clock. We all will see.
Good afternoon, Council and actually Committee of the Whole. And I guess my 10 minutes begins somewhat now. So I'll begin my presentation.
Seeing as it appears to me you may not have anything further to say, are you open to questions from the
Point of Order Chair? This is
I think the points of order are the privilege of the of council. Mr. Whitaker, do you have anything to present to us?
If I might, I believe that council should not dictate form of the presentation that a delegate makes. And if this is Mr. Whitaker's form for his presentation, then I think council should respect that.
Well, the chair finds no problem with that. Shall the chair be upheld by council? I'm getting the impression that the chair shall be upheld.
Thank you.
Three, two, Vern Kinley regarding governance and community engagement. Mr. Kinley.
Everyone hear me? So basically, we're not here to cause any grief for Lisa and her crew here. I know there's a lot of dissension, a lot of difference of opinion. But a couple of things I'd like to bring forward. I'd like to honor the regional organization for what they did for the city of Powell River, the five nights of great entertainment. I know you were there, Earl. You seen it all. I'd like to comment that I see refereeing youth in this town. I see at the ballpark helping out young people at the ballpark. And that's what this city's all about. As good volunteers. As my dad always said, a day's work for a day's pay. Beware of people with a pencil and a big mouth. Because sooner or later, they'll stab you in the back. So with that being said, I'd like to discuss what's happened with the Regional District and the name change there. There was less than 50 people that voted on the name change for the Regional District. Now, you ask yourself why? And I asked the counselor who was on that board at the time. And she said, no one took an interest. Well, the bottom line is, no one was consulted. Same thing with the hospital. Hospital changed the name. They had less than 50 people that voted yes to have the name changed because they were not properly consulted in this town. No engagement and no proper consultation. So then we go on. I talked to one of the aldermen or council members about the Powell River Garden Club and what happened with them. And it was mentioned that the garden club actually had a vote. It had a democratic vote. And what happened? 60% of the people voted to not change the name. So it still has the Powell River Garden Club. So why can't we have a vote on the issue of a name change at Powell River and be supported by you council members? It blows me away. The next thing I'd like to mention is about a divided community and how we got divided. We had a letter on June of 21 from H.D. Hackett. And he requested he did not request. He demanded a name change and not if but when. All he did was piss off the people in Powell River. That was totally uncalled for. He could have asked for a name change, but no, he demanded. That's why we're here today. There's so much decision or divisiveness in this town and why it happened. We are asking for a democratic vote on the issue of a name change. That's what we're all here about. We're not violent. We're not trying to cause you grief. We just want the right to vote. You already had a motion, and somebody rescinded that motion. And what you did is you pissed more people off. So it's, you know, I just don't get where you're coming from and why you won't allow us to have a democratic right on the issue of a name change for this city. You're not running a dictatorship here. We've had over 2,000 people sign a document with 95% saying no to a name change. And we're currently fundraised at our local establishment here and raising up money. Now we can go to the Regional District, and we're going to include First Nations as well and have a vote on the issue. That is the democratic way. It's also been mentioned in this chamber that we should have a vote where there be another name attached to the vote. Now, who's going to determine what the name is? And why would we do that before we even find out if the people want to change the name? If they want to change the name, then we will come up with a name and it will be changed. That's fair. That's the democratic way. So a divided community, a divided city that we have here, what's caused it? The single biggest mistake the previous council made was to hire two consultants. They would have been better off to hire two clowns. They would have done a better job for the people of our great city of Powell River.
Mr. Kinley, and can we please have the clock stopped?
Point of Order.
Yeah, I'm Counselor Elliott.
If you could please, Mr. McKinley, not call people clowns during your presentation. It's disrespectful.
That's what they are.
And it's it's out of order.
Put it in the paper, Paul.
It's out of order. And just if you disagree with someone, that is fine. Name calling is out of order.
Okay, keep your mouth shut while I'm talking, lady.
Whoa!
And that is also out of order.
Mr. Kinley, I'm going to have to ask you, I am going to ask you to to use language that is inherently respectful. Any kind of derogatory term is not respectful and demands like you just made are not. And sir, I know you, I've known you for a long time. And I know you're restraining yourself, but please, please, we want to listen to you. Please.
I'm not sure you do because I really believe
You know, I do.
I really believe that this council is missing the boat. You need to listen to the electorate and to the people of this city. So with that, I'll open up the questions.
Mr. Kinley, you've finished your presentation. Okay, thank you very much. Questions from council. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kinley, how do you think a vote should take place?
A quick answer? We've done a mailout. We fundraised $2,700 to do the first phase. And we currently had a fundraiser where we made $3,000 to do the second phase, all with public funds, no cost to the municipality. We even had one of the consultants threaten where we were going to hold the the meeting at, and I had to go before the board and convince them that we should be allowed to rent the building upstairs. So what kind of consultant pulls that shit?
Sorry, I should have been more clear in my question. What should council and staff work in agreement on on how a vote should be put so the citizens of Powell River can express their position on a name change?
What we're hoping for is this council between now and the next election will say that people will have the right to vote on the issue of a name change at the next election, which will not cost a lot of money. That's how we think it should be performed.
Thank you.
Counselor Palm.
Good, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kinley, for your presentation. I know that you can, knowing you can get carried away with being interrupted and whatnot, that's just your character, that's the way it is. So I have one question, Mr. Kinley, and that is, you mentioned that you're going to proceed with a additional poll in the Regional District as well as the Klauhman Community. And could you explain why you're doing that? And what, also explain what you learned from your first poll that in terms of conducting that, to make it official, what you have planned?
What we did, we sent out a formal vote, which allowed the people to say yes or no on the vote. And that's all we want from the Regional District, the same thing. We just want them to know that they're being included. Because we have a letter from Victoria states we have to have engagement and consultation. And that would include First Nations. So we want to include them. None of us have anything against First Nations. We think the treaty settlement they have, the land settlement they have, is the best thing that's happened at Powell River in years. The economic value, the buildings, the education for their people, it's phenomenal. But we do not want to have the name changed.
Thank you, Mr. Kinley. Any other questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, we'll carry on with the So I have one question, Mr. McKinley, and that is, you mentioned that you're going to proceed with an additional poll in the Regional District as well as the Klaa Man community. And could you explain why you're doing that? And also explain what you learned from your first poll that, in terms of conducting that, to make it official, what you have planned?
What we did, we sent out a formal vote, which allowed the people to say yes or no on the vote. And that's all we want from the Regional District, the same thing. We just want them to know that they're being included. Because we have a letter from Victoria states we have to have engagement and consultation, and that would include First Nations. So we want to include them. None of us have anything against First Nations. We think the treaty settlement they have, the land settlement they have, is the best thing that's happened at Powell River in years. The economic value, the buildings, the education for their people, it's phenomenal. But we do not want to have the name changed.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley. Any other questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, we'll carry on with the agenda. 3-3, Mariko Kubota and Janet Newberry regarding Community Belonging Project. Mariko and Janet.
Just going to take a breath. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us with you this afternoon. It's nice to see you all. My name is Mariko Kubota, and I am a Senior Policy Lead in the Healthy Public Policy Unit for Vancouver Coastal Health. And I'm part of the Community Belonging Project team, along with my colleague here, Dr. Janet Newberry. We are here, but two of our colleagues are not. And I just want to note who they are as well. Our other two team members are our expert parent, Tabitha Bergren on the team, as well as Dr. Alison Gurilak, a professor of UVIC in the School of Child and Youth Care. By coming forward to you today, we hope to remind you of the MOU and the Memorandum of Understanding that you signed onto our Community Belonging Project that was presented to you back in November by Director of Planning Jason Gao. We will provide you an update on that project. And we want to share with you a specific challenge that we have come up against in the project that has then now prompted a recommendation we would like to propose to you. And this is something we have discussed with the Planning Department ahead of time as well. So first, I would like to acknowledge that we work and that this work takes place on the traditional and treaty territory of the Klaa Man people. Our team strives to respect the central relationship of Klaa Man people with this land in all that we do. We're presently meeting here right now in a place that's called Ajumukh. And we are very grateful for this opportunity to be working in collaboration with you and the city staff. So to provide you with some background, as all of us know, that the B.C. Accessibility Act came into place in effect in 2022. As I mentioned previously, we did enter into a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with the city in November. And that was to focus on providing the city with meaningful information that is evidence-based knowledge on inclusion and accessibility, specifically to children and youth, that can be incorporated into the upcoming OCP, Official Community Plan Updates. The scope of the project that was agreed on was an environmental scan to start off with. And so that is taking place already. We felt that this was a mutually beneficial opportunity, given the OCP updates, and we hope that it just furthers the community engagement that we know that the city engages in. That's a little bit of background, and I'm just going to pass it on to now Dr. Janet Newberry to provide updates and the information around the challenge we've come up against.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for having us. So we'll try to be short and sweet. Just a little bit of context setting for where we are now. The accessibility plan has been adopted by the city. That's not part of our work, but it's important context for our work because it's connected with municipal obligations as related to the Accessibility Act. We, the Community Belonging Team, have accessed partial funding for the project from the B.C. Healthy Communities Child and Youth Mental Well-being Initiative Grant. So we've begun the environmental scan, and it's going really well. And we'll be sharing outcomes of the environmental scan with the city to inform the OCP updates as you see fit. The challenge that we've encountered is finding subsequent funding. So we have initial funding. We've started the work. And the subsequent applications haven't been successful. And we've shared up here feedback from one of the granting agencies. "Thanks very much for your application. What a thorough and thoughtful plan." The committee ultimately decided not to action this request. The general consensus was that this is work that the city should be funding and carrying out through the Accessibility Act. So that agency suggested applying for the Spark B.C. Accessibility Grant. So we looked into that, and we're told that it could only be granted to local governments. So we are not here to ask for taxpayer dollars or city funds, but we're just at the recommendation of the Planning Department at the city, requesting that staff be directed to apply for grant funding that is eligible to municipalities so that that funding could support the Community Belonging Project moving forward. I'll open it to questions or comments, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you both. Questions, discussion? Counselor Elliott?
I guess my initial thought is, are the grants that we apply for, could they be written by your group and then in assistance for capacity to the city?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. Have you interacted with Dave and Marge Hodgson's on your work that you're doing?
We're not doing research with people. We're beginning, as Mariko mentioned, with just an environmental scan of city programs and services. So we're not doing outreach ourselves. Outreach would be something that the city could do if they wanted to. But we're just reviewing city programs and services. That said, we do have two project advisors, well, three, with lived experience and the project is being driven by their input. So we haven't directly interacted with citizens as part of the work itself.
This couple has been a strong advocate for accessibility for probably 10 years now in the city. So you might want to pass along their name to whoever is doing sort of grassroots work on what has been done to date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Doughton?
I wonder if you could expand for everybody on exactly what the environmental scan is intended to discover and what it's about. So it's a kind of a nebulous term that you're doing, an environmental scan. And I'd like to have more definition of exactly what that is and how it would provide information for our OCP considerations.
I'll start and invite you to jump in if you want. So basically, we are through guidance from city staff. So we're interacting very closely with people who work for the city in multiple departments, getting an understanding of what kinds of policies, legislation, procedures, program information, staffing ratios, whatever it might be, that currently informs their work in order to understand that, you know, what opportunities exist for children with disabilities and their families, and also what barriers might exist. And then having an understanding of what the current state is of all of those things, then looking at the legislation like the B.C. Accessibility Act and other things we can consider with support from our project advisors as well, what recommendations might be possible. So it's... Yeah, go ahead.
And if I can just have one follow-up to that? Do you know if there are timeline deadlines for this Spark B.C. grant?
I don't think so. I reached out to them because on the website it wasn't evident, and it seems like it's a rolling intake. I don't know if anyone else in the room knows the answer to that, though.
Counselor Isaacson?
I know that when we endorsed entering into this MOU, we were quite excited, knowing that staff capacity is limited. And any ways to work with community groups to gather more information to help inform the OCP process was really... Would be really helpful. And especially knowing that there are alternative funding sources for this work is exciting. I'm willing to make a recommendation from that slightly different from what's up here, knowing that you've indicated willingness to support in the writing of the work, but that staff be directed to work with a Community Belonging Project to apply for funding eligible to municipalities that can support the Community Belonging Project.
Second, Counselor Almeda, discussion council? Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, I was fishing for that similar direction. And I guess I was wondering if we should ask our CIO if that's the helpful motion to make or if there's anything we can do to make that motion a little more helpful.
Through the chair, I think the motion's broad enough that it doesn't speak to one particular funding source, which is helpful because I am aware that we may have use of one funding through our accessibility work that we're doing. So we want to make sure we align. And it actually might be a good idea to also connect with the Accessibility Committee that's part of the QRD, the library and ourselves, to make sure that we align. So I believe the way you've worded the motion is broad enough. I am grateful to hear that you could help with preparing and doing the legwork. And we are simply, as staff, helping to put that forward. And so then we would come to you when we have something specific. We'd work collaboratively, and I think I have a sense of both the speakers and their capacity for grant writing. So that gives me great comfort, given that I know we're proceeding with a few things from council. I wonder if Ms. LaForte, given your role on the Accessibility Committee, I think the motion's broad enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like a tiny tweak to the motion. The Community Belonging Project is the project that the city and our team have joined together with in the MOU. So the language for who... I forget the way at the beginning, but it should be Community Belonging Team on the Community Belonging Project? Thank you.
So I move an amendment to strike Community Belonging Project and write Community Belonging Team.
In the first instance, and then in the second instance, keep Project.
So in the first instance, strike Community Belonging Project and insert Community Belonging Team.
Second, Counselor Almeda, any discussion relative to the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor? unanimous? Now, any further discussion to the motion as amended? Counselor Palm?
Through the chair, I just want to express appreciation for both of you coming in here today because even before I was on council, that's a long time ago now, Dr. Geraldine Brock initiated accessibility in this community for many years and was our champion. And I remember Mayor Elskard making reference to that on regular occasion, knowing full well that our city was not accessible here, there, and everywhere, which is exemplified by moving our chamber down here to the lower level where people could not access it in the past, upstairs. So anyway, thank you very much, and let's get some funding. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, all in favor? unanimous? Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate the work you're doing and that we can carry, help carry it on. Thank you very much. Onto 3-4, Ted Vazutti regarding problems working with city council. Mr. Vazutti?
Good afternoon. Beautiful day to be inside. City of Powell River elected officials, officials whose job is to do better for the city and its taxpayers and not to cause hardship and anguish. I've spoken with many citizens regarding the dysfunction of city council, and it appears to be a very mutual feeling. I thought the last council was horrible. And I still think that. But this council is actually beating them right now. Fabulous Five is so obviously working on their own agenda, and the presumed head of this group, Counselor Isaacson, is out of control. Point of order, Counselor Isaacson's perceived non-pecuniary conflict of interest grows within the city daily. Even during an April Committee of the Whole meeting, Counselor Isaacson had more to say about Klau Man or talking about their issues than anything else. I am well aware that she was hired by the city with taxpayers' funds to perform a function with a dysfunctional joint working group. What Trina Isaacson and her working partner did regarding this group was atrocious and not to mention embarrassing. I have watched the video of this hired joint working group, and could it be more one-sided with people involved? The whole group had a biased side. I have also read the report from the past Powell River mayor, Dave Formosa, where he states, quote, "Powell River did a lousy job on the name change process," unquote. This article is from the Powell River Now, April 25, 2022. Formosa actually apologized for the rollout and the horrible job of conveying the plan to the public. On the topic of conflict of interest, I, as well as many other citizens, feel that the non-pecuniary conflict of interest of Councillors Isaacson, Elliott, and now Southcott, since he excused himself because of feeling he was, is still very real. But these councillors should not be representing nor speaking for the city of Powell River or the Regional District on any issues pertaining to C3 meetings, name change issues. The mayor of this city is and should be our voice to any group outside of the city limits. As for past incidents of disrespect and being dysfunctional, this came from Counselor Southcott towards Pat Martin. Why has this not been rectified? Counselor Southcott is being asked to do the professional and honorable thing and apologize at an open council meeting. The meeting where he had attacked Ms. Martin was embarrassing and disrespectful, not only to her, but to all the citizens of Powell River. The hypocrisy of it is laughable. Counselor Palm had a minor infraction and was punished harshly with demanding words of resignation. Yet Counselor Southcott has no ramifications to his actions. This council needs to stop trying to be the leader of the pack, as Counselor Dought reported after his return from Victoria in regards to issues with Klau Man and Indigenous issues provincially. This is not something to be proud of. This is not something our great city history needs to have. The city did nothing wrong. Our name is clear of any wrongdoings. Powell River is well-known worldwide for its hospitality, sports, recreational areas, and very proud, honest, and respectful people. This council's dysfunction is extremely harmful to its citizens. Its left-sided ideological ways of thinking, not to mention total... Total... I can never say that word. Is seen and recognized by many. Do you understand the word I'm trying to say?
Sorry, can you say that?
Total authoritarianism. Hotel... Say it, somebody. Thank you. The ways that this council is spending money and not responsibly, Zungabuss is one example, concerns the taxpayers because we are already one of the highest, if not the highest tax cities in the province. Finally, the concerned citizens presented a very real report to council regarding the name change issue. This opinion report was conducted with transparency and showed you how the people of this city feel. We were not trying to pull anything. This is very real to us. What did this council do? Nothing. Not one question, not one sentence, not one word. How disrespectful can an elected city group be? How dysfunctional can this council be? We are ashamed of you. Thank you for the time, citizens of Powell River. Powell River forever.
Thank you, Mr. Vazutti. Questions from council? Counselor Palm and the mayor?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Vazutti. I just want to clarify one point that you made at the end there, and that was that you thought that we did a disservice by not saying a word the opinion poll status was presented to us. I can assure you from my vantage point that the presentation that was made that day was right on, well-done. And when the stack of those 1,900-plus ballots were pulled out of that box, that spoke loud and clear as to where our electorate stands. And I don't think we had to express much after seeing that presentation. don't think we had to express much after seeing that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for explaining that and I do see what you're, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. My question has to do with relativity. Not referring to Einstein and the mathematical side of relativity, but it's, I get a chance to talk to a lot of mayors around the province. And one of the common subjects is, how can council represent people that elected them? You pointed out situations where you think this council is not working collectively. Can you point us to another council in B C that you think we could look at as a model?
Actually, one very simple little thing that I watched and it was a Port Alberni council. And first thing the mayor did when he came up is he did exactly the opposite of what Counselor Southcott did tonight, where he opened it up to the group. He opened it up to the city. So the people, when they listen and talk, the rest of the group actually has the chance to applaud and to show that they back their speakers, that they back. And the council is open to listening to this. It was quite, it was quite fun to watch. It told me what I would like to see in a council that is here for the public and for their taxpayers, just to be open. Our perceptions of what is going on with this council right now, we're having issues with. And it's just not me. There's a lot. So I guess in the end, we're asking that you work for us and for us. And this is what we're talking about is our boundaries, city boundaries. So please work with us and stop telling us that you're doing more for outside the district than you are for inside. Does that help?
Thank you. And people have heard me talk about the success that Port Alberni has had in a number of different ways, the economic development, the relationships with their neighboring First Nations, et cetera. So I'll have another chat with the mayor. So thank you very much.
I mean, just as a little point, I look at the flags in here that are flying and I go to the complex, the Powell River Recreational Complex, and the City of Powell River flags not even flying within the complex. Those things that we pick up on, those are the things that we're asking council to, you know, if you're in there and you see that kind of stuff, then you push for the City of Powell River because the other three flags are in there. So who are you representing? Are you here for us? Put our city flags up in our buildings. And you put a letter to the school board because I walked into their school the other day. There's three flags, but there's not a City of Powell River flag flying in there. So these are the things that we see and I guess we're asking that we work together and be proud of our city. Thanks.
Counselor Elliott?
Just one point of correction. The mayor of Port Alberni is Ms. Shari Minions and she's a woman. She's one of the younger mayors in our province and she's, she's wonderful. I've talked to her several times and yeah, I think she does a wonderful job as well.
No other comments? I have two. One is, I did feel regret in the anger I expressed towards Ms. Martin and I emailed her a couple of days after that meeting. But I did not review, go back and look at the video of the meeting itself, to see myself performing. So I intend to do that. The second comment is that, and Mr. Vazutti, you can attest to this. I am a respecter, I'm speaking for myself now personally, of innovation and free speech and the brilliance that comes out of everyone in our community. The reason Mr. Vazutti can attest to this is because things changed a little bit when I became the ambulance chief here and we worked together. And it was, it was 10 years where practically no complaints left that station. And I'm proud of that because we sorted things out ourselves there and I'm totally confident that we can do that here as well. But that's not really what I, my point, my point is, is the signs that you've all brought. That is inherently respectful because it respects the requirement for order here, but it facilitates free expression. So that's innovative and I appreciate that very much, speaking for myself personally. So thank you all. And just tiny bit further, over 50 people who are mostly clearly representing a particular view has an impact on every single person sitting at this table. I am confident of that and I absolutely assure you of that myself. And I wake up at three o'clock in the morning thinking about this stuff. So with that, we will continue on with the agenda to correspondence, four one and four two. I would like to suggest that because these two items are letters to Mayor Wasno, that Mayor Wasno, in my estimation, is perfectly capable of responding to them. Unless there is any other discussion, I would like to assume, since we have accepted this agenda, that these items of correspondence are accepted and that we proceed with the agenda unless anyone here has any discussion. By unanimous consent, we, Counselor Paul?
Echo your, suggest that the mayor should respond to the two individuals that are...
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing nothing else, onto reports for decision, five one, bylaw amendment to comply with Bill 44 Housing Statutes Residential Development Amendment Act 2023 under one. Oh, Ms. CIO?
I was just going to speak to this before Ms. Pukesh did. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, so council, given what you have in the arena today, I thought I would just briefly introduce staff's report and give you the opportunity to ask questions or have a brief presentation.
If we're a break so that we can hear.
Yeah.
CIO is saying while people leave, that's what they want to do?
I think that's a good suggestion, Counselor Dought. If anybody else doesn't want to sit through the reports here, maybe we'll take a couple of minute break and let people leave if they want to.
And it amended the Local Government Act and required local governments across the province to update their zoning bylaws to permit new density limits. These density limits apply to all single and two-family residentially zoned properties within our boundaries that measure less than 4,050 square meters and more than 280 square meters in size. Local governments, as the CIO mentioned, have a June 30th deadline in order to have our bylaw amendments across the finish line. For the city of Powell River, our magic number is four. That's the number of housing units that must be permitted on our single and two-family residential lots without benefit of a zoning amendment application through council. Another amendment that's relevant to the zoning bylaw amendment put in front of you were the changes that prohibit a local government from holding a public hearing on zoning bylaw amendments specifically and solely for the purpose of complying with this June 30th deadline. At the April 2nd Committee of the Whole meeting, planning staff presented a high-level overview of the impacts of Bill 44 and discussed as well how while council must permit the minimum four housing units, it does and can retain authority and discretion over other forms of regulation such as building heights, setbacks, lot coverage, parking, et cetera. Staff presented a summary of each of the forms of associated regulation and sought targeted direction from Committee of the Whole in six areas. And the bylaw amendments that are in front of the staff report today as Appendix C and D reflect this targeted direction. They are outlined in a table, a summary table that was attached to the staff report as Appendix B. Just briefly, the direction from Committee of the Whole was to permit a variety of housing types on all lots, up to four units, to make no changes to existing residential building setbacks, which we have not done, to make no changes to existing residential building height maximums, which we have not done, to make very modest increases to lot coverage provisions, bumping up 40% to 50, and to remove carriage houses and their footprint from the 10% non-residential accessory building lot coverage provisions. Also to provide a modest relaxation of off-site or off-street parking requirements and provide a cap per lot. So regardless of housing type, size, number of bedrooms, to require no more than one parking space and to cap the total maximum number of spaces required per lot to three. As well, in a related, related and to align with the province's recommendations, staff recommended retaining existing development permit requirements, but attempting to streamline and simplify the approval process for our developers by delegating approvals of up to those four units of housing to the Director of Planning Services. Currently, the delegation bylaw delegates authority from up to two housing units. So as councils prohibited under the Local Government Act from holding a public hearing on these bylaw amendments, the recommendations from staff are to acknowledge that prohibition and to direct staff to issue notice of a prohibited public hearing and the date that his council will consider first reading of the amendment bylaw. And then for both the zoning amendment bylaw attached as Appendix C and the delegation amendment bylaw attached as Appendix D to be referred from this committee to a future meeting of council for consideration of readings. And I know that the zoning amendment bylaw was 16 pages long. It does affect all of our single and two-family residential zones, associated definitions and other regulations. But I am happy if any member of council has any specific questions about the contents of the amendment bylaw to provide any clarity.
Questions? Thank you very much. Looks like you've done a spectacular job of explaining this to us. Would someone like to read the recommendation, Counselor Isaacson?
Yeah, I'll just note for public watching and wondering why we don't have questions, we had a pretty fulsome discussion about this at a previous Committee of the Whole when staff were seeking early input and making sure that they brought forward a report to us that we would likely support. So for that reason, I move that committee members concur that a public hearing under Local Government Act, Section 464, Part 4, for proposed City of Powell River zoning amendment bylaw 2100, 2006, amendment bylaw 2749, 2024 is prohibited.
Secretary, Counselor Almeida, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous.
I move that members of the committee direct staff to issue notice of council's intention to consider first reading of City of Powell River zoning bylaw 2100, 2006, amendment bylaw amendment bylaw 2749, 2024 pursuant to Local Government Act Section 467 at a future meeting of council.
Second, Councilor Omeda, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, unanimous, carried.
I move that members of the committee refer City of Powell River delegation bylaw 2367, 2013, amendment bylaw 2750, 2024 for readings at a future meeting of council.
Second, Councilor Omeda, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, unanimous, carried. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
On to 5:02, Thursday Night Market, Manager of City Property Partnerships, Public Relations, Ms. Mathew.
Through the chair, if I might pause before Ms. Mathew starts her presentation. We've had a request from some of our audience regarding making sure that we speak clearly into the microphones. Despite our best efforts, audio is not always the best for those sitting in the gallery. So I did promise that if you could make sure that the microphones were right in front of you when you speak, that would really help our citizens listening in and also in the audience. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Committee of the Whole. Through the chair, I'm bringing this report in relation to Thursday night markets, which were brought forward as a result of an interested citizen during COVID times. We accepted this request to put on a free market for vendors as part of a reimagine, restart, recover campaign. As we are now exiting COVID times, I wish to bring this to council or the committee to determine how these events should continue or not continue, as is your will. Staff conducted some research to see how other communities in BC operate their markets. And it's quite uncommon for a municipality to run these markets. Often it is a not-for-profit group or a Chamber of Commerce or visitor information services that provide these. And more so, when these markets are provided, they are at a fee to the vendor to cover costs of the market. Staff have provided an analysis of this, which is included in your package. These markets have been reasonably successful over the last three years. And it's indicated that while we may not know exactly how much staff time has gone into preparing them, an on-the-ground-at-the-event cost of around $5,000 per year is contributed to the event. If we were to look at the average number of vendors being around 35 per event, then a small amount of maybe $25 per vendor to attend the event would cover the city's costs and provide a bit of room for cushioning. We have suggested that perhaps as an incentive to vendors, if they were to sign up for the full nine-week market, then we may be able to offer a discounted rate of 15% to the vendor fee, which would ensure that we have more vendors throughout. And with that, our recommendation is that the members of the committee direct staff to continue to host the Thursday night markets for the 2024 calendar year and further that vendors be charged a fee of $25 per market. And I invite you for questions.
Questions, Councilor Omeda?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Mathews. I was excited to see this on the report and also surprised when, to find out that vendors didn't have to pay anything in previous years. So I am, I'm happy to see the night markets continue and to find a way that we can do it as the city. I missed the part of about the 15%. Somehow I didn't read the last page or the last line of your report till you just mentioned that. A couple of questions that I had, I sent you an email about one the other day. Do you know of the vendors we had last year, how many of those were in or participating every single week of last year's market?
Yes, thank you, Councilor Omeda, through the chair. There were, I did some research on the full numbers, so 361 vendors over the nine weeks. Over of those, so 59 vendors. And of all nine weeks were 19. So 19 of the 59 vendors did all nine weeks. And looking at close, so 11 of the vendors did at least seven weeks. So roughly, you could say around 30 vendors were pretty consistent at being all nine weeks. They're roughly half.
Thank you. Yeah, just as a follow-up to that, just, I'm in favor of continuing the night markets. And I think though, in terms of your projected budget, considering that last year vendors were able to participate without a cost, I think evidence and history shows that when costs are involved, registration numbers tend to decline. The 35 average, I would love to see that happen. It might not be as high with the cost involved. But the 19 regulars that you shared, I have a feeling that with the cost involved, we might be closer to that 2025 mark, which would impact the budget and stuff. But I would like to see this continue and more advertising to see greater turnouts as well. Thank you.
There, and then Councilor Dow.
Thank you. Have you looked at talking with the chamber to see if they would be interested in working with you this year to facilitate a handoff next year?
Through the chair, thank you, Mayor Waz. Now, I haven't started a discussion with the chamber yet. Was interested in hearing council's direction on whether the market should continue or not. There are other community groups that have reached out informally to say that they would assist. So I think there is an appetite. I think the chamber would be a good body to head this and ultimately is perhaps more appropriate run by a Chamber of Commerce than through staff time at a municipality. But it's as directed by, by council, the committee.
Councilor Dow?
Couple, couple of basic questions. The first one is who, who can rent a booth? If I want to spend five bucks and set up a booth, put up a little table and a sign with a picture of Snoopy and talk to the counselor, could I do that? If I am, citizens in favor of being opposed to the name change, could I do that? If I'm the liberal candidate for the provincial election, can I do that? So are there any rules about who can set up a booth and what they can be for?
Through the chair, thank you, Councilor Dow. Yes, there is an application process that vendors go through. The application is made available on the website. And then it is made sure that we have a good spread of vendors as well. So I haven't spent a huge amount of time on the application itself to tell you what all the questions are. If this is something to move forward, I may look to make some tweaks to that in any event.
I know, I know some, quite a few different markets have restrictions on what kind of groups that can participate. And a lot of the times, political groups aren't welcome. They're, you know, generally there for selling artisans' wares and other issues like that. But I was just curious if there were any rules like that.
Through the chair, yes, I believe there are through the application process. But whether they exclude political, I would need to double check.
Councilor Elliott, then Councilor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. So if we were to try to do this in a cost recovery way, we're looking at maybe $16, $17 per vendor. And so I'm curious about the differences, maybe helpful to the city, but maybe more helpful to the vendors, given that they were free last time. And in transition, we might not want to. And it also leaves room for whatever, whoever takes over to set rates based on what they think they need to cover costs in, in a way. So I guess my question is, could we set a rate that was more break even? Which would also save us money because it's been costing us money.
Through the chair, Councilor Elliott, I think one of the issues is that we don't necessarily know how many vendors we're going to get. So it's difficult to predict exactly how much we'll receive. However, I would suggest that any additional income or revenue generated from the market through the vendor fee would be reinvested into promotion of the market or providing other entertainment that might draw more crowds to create a greater atmosphere at the market and therefore assist the vendors in that way. So I would anticipate that type of return for the vendor.
That's an excellent answer. Thank you.
Councilor Isaacson?
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, you included a table of markets in other communities and the costs. What I didn't see is comparison of table costs for other markets within the city. Are you aware of tabling costs at other market events that are hosted within the city?
Through the chair, thank you, Councilor Isaacson. I did look at how the Powell River Farmers Market runs their market. And there is a member fee as well as a table fee. It's suggested a minimum or a maximum according to percentage of sales. I think for simplicity, we would just look to charge a standard fee and it's not a full year. So a membership seems a little cumbersome for this type of event.
I was thinking more so sometimes there are like, you know, the holiday craft fairs or there's sale events at the Arc, for example. Okay. And then the second question was, so when a city hosts something, it's able to work internally to deal with things like permitting and rules. And if you have an outside organization, sometimes they come up against city permitting issues and things become cumbersome for them. So I think I generally do support the recommendations in here. But I'm concerned that if an external group takes things over, they might come up against city tape. And I'm wondering what we might be able to look ahead to do to help minimize that.
Through the chair, Councilor Isaacson, my suggestion might be that we look to work with another organization so that they are attending the events and hosting the actual event. And we might be able to assist on the background work in ensuring that we're happy with the application and sharing that the process, the process in the background goes smoothly. That would be an easier ask of staff time, perhaps.
I'm maybe even thinking about if there's, if there is a handover and some sort of agreement for that transition, that it clarifies what the city is willing to approve, what have you, in advance so that there's some clarity on the partner's part, that they're not going to come up against a business license requirement or something that was unanticipated that, that makes things hard for them. Anyways, okay, that's, those are my questions, Chair.
Through the chair, I've had some limited experience with the city and I'm in the Chamber of Commerce. And it's actually a lot easier if there's one entity rather than several individuals that we deal with. And so there were a number of times where, for example, they wanted help accessing a stage or sound equipment. We were able to do certain things to facilitate music through our Parks Recreation Culture and support different collaborative pieces that would have been perhaps a little less easy for several individuals. And so I just want to support and echo that there would be ways where it'd be more efficient for one external entity to work with us. And I think there's lots of good practices out there that we can look to. Thank you.
Councilor Palm?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. I'm glad to see that we'll be covering our costs of the city in this endeavor for next year. We've got it started through COVID and whatnot, free of charge. So that's a great thing and it's well-established. Just a couple of points that were, one, there was a problem with the, the timing and the venue. Is the venue going to be in the same place as last year?
My understanding is that it would be in the same venue on the, in the old arena site.
So one of the problems that caused during that time of year, when fishing season starts on July 15th, there is a heck of a lot of boats that want to get in the water and go fishing and access the ramp down at that venue. And I think.
That was the pier that was already moved. That was when it was down on the pier. It's moved over to the Willingham Beach, Old Arena site.
That problem's disappeared then.
Yeah, we're good.
Excellent. Very happy to hear that. So the, the other point that, did we reach out communication-wise to the regulars that are down there to get any feedback in terms of the $25 cost?
Through the chair, Councilor Palm, no, have not had that conversation yet. I think there is a risk for the city not charging a fee. We need to be aware of our obligations not provide, to provide assistance to business. And so I think it's important that we have this discussion at committee level and council level before taking it further.
Glad to hear. We're going to follow this up with direct communication to those participants because I'd, I'd hate to see this thing fall, fall apart just because we're charging a nominal fee. Thank you.
Just a quick, just to reaffirm, the mayor's suggestion of speaking with the Chamber of Commerce, you're going to follow that? Great. And this just occurred to me, is there any, and it's truly my ignorance, is there any additional risk to the city by us charging a fee? Like, does that then imply some other responsibility that then becomes a risk?
Through the chair, Councilor Southcott, we did seek a legal opinion on charging a fee, just in general to, to find out if there were any issues and none were raised. So I feel.
Okay, good.
Comfortable.
Great, thank you very much. And seeing no other questions, there are recommendations attached with this. Councilor Omeda?
I will go ahead with those recommendations. I move that members of the committee direct staff to continue to host the Thursday night markets for the 2024 calendar year and further that vendors be charged a fee of $25 per market.
Second, Councilor Isaacson, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, unanimous, carried.
I move that members of the committee direct staff to engage with the community in an effort to find another organization to host the Thursday night markets beginning in 2025 onwards.
Second, Councilor Elliott, discussion, Councilor Elliott?
Thank you. I'm in favor of the motion and I just wanted to encourage us with respect to the initial motion where we're going to charge the fee, that we get that notice out there as early as possible. I know that you would, but I just wanted to highlight that folks planning to do that in the summer ought to know as early as possible that there's going to be a fee if there's going to be one. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, all in favor, unanimous, carried. Thank you very much. Ms. Mathews? Onto Reports for Information, 61 Airport Update, Ms. DeBertig.
Chair, your worship, members of council, so, Carson, thank you. I'm going to provide an update to our airport runway rehabilitation project. So as you're aware, construction commenced on April 8th with the closure of the runway. And upland contracting started with pulverizing or milling of the asphalt that existed up there. So in this process, there's, you can see the milling machine on the left. They had to pulverize the asphalt. And the spec was that pieces couldn't be larger than 38 millimeters so that we could get that compaction. So the pulverizing, you can see where they, they've made good progress on here. As of today, the milling has been completed and they're, they're moving on with the next aspects of the job. Here you can see an X that is required by. Here you can see an X that is required by Transport Canada to indicate that the runway is in fact closed. And there was approximately, I think there was five of these large Xs that were placed throughout the runway to ensure that nobody inadvertently came and tried to land on our, on our strip. You can see where they're doing stripping of the topsoil on the edge of the, of the runway. And they had to move the ditch over as well. They are running conduit in this, in this area. So here you can see where the electrical conduit has been placed in the trench. That work, the electrical underground, the conduit work is nearing completion today with the receptacles that have to be placed in there over the next few weeks. You can see the activity here where once, once the asphalt was pulverized and compacted, they start bringing in a crush aggregate approximately six inches over a minimum of 150 millimeters of crush. And you can see all the, all the trucks. So Upland Contracting, they had oh, six excavators, four rock trucks, four rollers. At one time they had two pulverizers on site. Unfortunately, one of them broke down. But they were able to carry on and not impact the critical path with, with the second machine that they had. So they also have dozers, loaders, backhoes. The, our locals supplied, you can see the tandem trucks with the pups on there. Those are predominantly provided by our local contractors. So the milling has been complete. Once the milling was, was completed and the compaction of that milling started, we encountered some sinkholes. And initially we were very alarmed. We weren't sure if it was an indication of some subsurface structure that was going to take up a lot of a lot of labor and materials to, to complete. What we found was there was an old wooden culvert in this location that had disintegrated. And we had the bridging of the asphalt that didn't make it apparent. But once, once we did the compacting and the pulverizing of the material, they became apparent. We dug that material out and just put in structural fill back in there and and they were able to carry on. So you can see here more of the, of the grading of the base cores. And, and finally, they, here they're, they're just doing some fine grading of the, of the runway in anticipation of commencing paving, which is scheduled to start May 7th. So that work is going to take approximately, I believe it's on their schedule, it's 20 working days. So currently we're totally on schedule with anticipating completion at the beginning of June. So looking, looking good. So if any, any questions after? Those comments.
Thank you very much. Council Omeda and then Council Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Bertig. Great to see. Just curious, I guess, with the weather our spring tends to provide us, is there anything that would impede us from Mother Nature that could slow us down at all?
At this time, they, they did, they, they encountered some, what were the anticipated might dilemma with the monsoons that we had over the weekend. With respect to paving, we're not going to run into impact from temperatures because it's five degrees and above and then they can pave. The only issue here is if we get large accumulation of rain and there's pooling on the runway, that may, may slow them. But with the weather that we're, we're getting today or even yesterday, it's not going to slow them down.
Thank you so much. So the grade change, has that been measured in and done?
Yes, it's, it's part of the design and so it will be one, less than 1.5%. So, so as, as opposed to where the runway was before, where there was some undulations, it's going to be just a nice straight grade, but below that 1.5%.
And so this, it's kind of lucky that the sinkhole didn't fall through before, when we weren't expecting it?
There was no indications of any settlement on the asphalt at that point. So there was, you know, it would have become apparent once we did our runway checks, if there was any settlement, but there's no settlement in that area whatsoever.
Last question. So are we time wise on our, our schedule, ahead of schedule or behind schedule?
Currently we're on schedule and there's buffers built into the schedule. So, so without saying it, I would say that they're slightly ahead of schedule, but there, there's still mechanical issues and placement issues that could crop up right now. But there is a buffer in there so that we can be assured that we're going to open up the runway by June 15th.
Okay. And we are talking regularly to Pacific Coastal Air and keeping them up to date as to where we're at.
Yes, we have weekly meetings with them. So we keep them apprised of where we're at with the schedule. So, so they get more or less a briefing like, like you're receiving today.
Thank you so much.
Mayor and then Council Isaacson.
Thank you. I've received a number of phone calls from people inquiring about the convoy of gravel trucks on the way to the airport. Is that now finished? And if not, when do you expect it will be finished?
Yes, that, that movement of those, those trucks is, is essentially over now where there still be some limited material that has to come in, but not, not the placement of the large volumes that, that we recently saw. The next phase will see asphalt trucks, but not to the extent that, that we had the trucks for the placement of the crush.
Thank you.
Council Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair, the culvert that gets removed, that got removed, is there any concern that it was serving a purpose at some point or now, and that water would build up by its removal?
Yeah, we definitely have looked at that and we looked at the infrastructure around that and have made some upgrades to it so that there's no water flowing across, across the runway anymore. It'll run longitudinally along the, along the asphalt runway. So that's, that's been taken care of, yes.
And the weekly update meetings that you mentioned having with Pacific Coastal, are there other entities impacted by the closure that are involved in those meetings? For example, like Vancouver Coastal Health or I guess what I'm wanting to know ultimately is have any issues popped up with the airport closure being in, in, in place with any institutions in town? And how have those been dealt with?
We, we, we meet regularly with, with the hospital staff and, you know, emergency personnel. And to date I have not heard of any issues with respect to having to transport a patient out of Powell River.
Thank you. And final question, the presentation that you share with us isn't on the agenda. Is it possible to add it to the agenda so that the public can see? This, thank you. I just see some nods from staff. Do you need a motion to amend the agenda or is it fine? Okay.
Council Palm.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Mr. Bertig for your update. Been getting updates from various points of our community on this and I'm very happy to see the progress making and let's just hope that the skies don't open up during the paving. But I want to compliment staff for holding Upland's feet to the fire and because I've seen work going on in the weekends, which I think wasn't previously scheduled. So I want to thank you for doing everything in your power to bring this home on time. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the chair, through the chair. Upland's contracting received an agreement from their union so that they could work seven, seven days a week so that they could stay ahead of the, the schedule to ensure that, that end date is not impacted.
Make sure Quentin hears that.
Hey, seeing no other questions or discussion. Thank you very much, Mr. Bertig. Very great news. It really is. I'm very happy about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto six two, community engagement reports. Who would like to start that? Council Omeda.
Thank you, Chair. I've been out of town since our last council meeting and just got back last week. So didn't get a chance to engage very much, but happy to be back in town.
Thank you, Chair. Had a brief meeting with Council Southcott and some staff from the Future Foundry in Powell River. And so they were just seeking some advice on how to proceed if they wanted to explore city owned land as possible for foundry. And so I expect they'll be working on options as they are exploring many options on how and where to build a foundry from our community that got announced last year with a commitment of provincial support. I was an emcee for a fundraiser for Cuthbert Safe that was hosted by Coastal Women in Business. That was a great event. There was I think over 140 tickets sold and there was silent auction and heads or tails game, a number of fun things. And so I appreciate them asking me to emcee that. And all for a good cause with Grace House. I attended the ceremony for the National Day of Mourning and as the sole counselor in attendance represented council by providing a few remarks. And it was great to, to interact with city staff, including some folks from operations, I believe, and also firefighting staff. And you know, there was a ceremony and we also just had a really good discussion afterwards. And there was a strong theme on not only as a reminder to the public, a National Day of Mourning is about workers who lose their lives on the job, but not only, you know, because of a physical incident on the job, also because of impacts that linger for decades. For example, I'd forget the exact number, but I believe of the deaths that happen annually in B.C. due to workplace injuries or incidences, still about half of them are due to asbestos. So things, things linger over a long time. And there was also a good discussion about mental health and how the impacts of that are hurting workers and hurting workers in the short and in the long term, and the importance of employers to, to consider that when when workers are on the job. So really great discussion for those who stuck around. And then finally I attended the Community Action Team meeting yesterday, really great attendance. There must have been about 40 people there. This is the group with, featuring a number of people with lived and living experience with substance use and also a number of agencies that work to support people who use substances or who are experiencing addiction. And you know, great overall meeting, but one thing I wanted to highlight is the Sustain Team. Sustain stands for Substance Users Society Teaching Advocacy Instead of Neglect. They are a group of, of people who with lived or living experience in substance use and they meet meet weekly and they are going to be shifting their meetings to a bit of a community service role. They will be doing some cleanup in little areas of the community during their meetings. And we'll be trying to find out pockets of areas in our community that maybe need a little bit of a cleanup because of trash left around. And yeah, want to support them in that work and thank them for for thinking of ways to be in service of our community. That's all. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I'll just keep it brief. Went to a fundraiser for the paddling for life. New guys, ladies and you know, that's a, a group of breast cancer survivors and allies that go out there and paddle on Powell Lake every week and go to the odd competition, but most of them are of an advanced age and they are always competing in the seniors category. We spent a pleasant evening with them. I went with many other counselors to attend the event put on by the Pickleball Association, which are trying to raise the public attention to the pickleball situation locally and the number of people that are increasingly turning to pickleball as a sport, young and old, and their hopes and dreams of perhaps getting a facility someday. And we talked about all kinds of different ways that they might be able to partner with different groups to get that going and try to get an indoor soundproof building where they can play the pickleball and enjoy it and make all the noise they want to. So it was, it was good to see that many people out there. The hall was full all the time I was there. And lots of good people talking about how to improve things in the future.
Thank you, Council Dout. I appreciate Council Isaacson attending the Day of Mourning. It's something that I haven't missed before this year, which I did for the first time. And I even failed the mayor in representing him. I'm sure he would have been there, but both of us had previous commitments. So I'm really glad that you attended. I, my previous profession is one that lost people and it's a day that means an awful lot to me, but I wasn't there this year. However, I did have the happy occasion of, with a small group out in front of City Hall of raising the Earth Day flag, which is now Earth Month as of a resolution a few years back from the previous council. And they all stood around and chatted for quite a while. It was a very friendly group. So that was a lovely occasion. The pickleball event, as Council Dout mentioned, gave me opportunity to also to connect that organization with the Foundry organizer, organizer, because they're both looking for facility space and partnerships help with success. So keeping my fingers crossed for both those organizations who pickleball is a really low barrier sport and I can see young people as well as the older people that already are attracted getting involved in that. And who knows what could happen. So felt great to be there. Something that very unexpectedly occurred today, I happened to have coffee with the Regional District Board Chair. And when I walked in, he said, hey, you want to go with me up to the Resource Recovery Center? An opportunity had come up. Mike Wall was there. And so we had an hour and a half tour of, of it. It is more impressive than it was a few months ago when we toured it last time. They are, the buildings are all built. They're now in the stages of building interior walls, wiring, all the machinery that is associated with that. And it's fully integrated with natural systems. It is totally phenomenal that we were standing just a few feet away from the corner of one wall where there was ground being prepared and no more than 10 feet away from a beautiful wetland in which frogs were singing and birds. And then just about 50 meters away, there was a deer grazing on the hillside. It was totally amazing. And that is how beautiful this whole thing is from all machines right up to to the nature. And it is for the most part going to take the place of Augusta's operation now in a very upgraded way and will serve us, I am confident. Many years into the future, the organics facility I'll just mention is almost the same size as the MSL municipal solid waste. In other words, garbage that's picked up from households in expecting that full separation I'm anticipating and hoping for a local facility to cut our costs for 40 plus percent of the waste stream by local processing sometime hopefully in the future. So anyway, that was a really exciting, unexpected opportunity. And just one more thing I wanted to mention. I've been involved simply as a witness, I guess you could call it, in a program called Walk With Me. This is interview, these are interviews have been conducted with people who have had experience or active experience in substance use. So people who are facing immense challenges and in their lives. There, when I was a paramedic, I used to get questions constantly about that population, which I engaged with pretty much every day. It is definitely something that people do not understand. I am confident in saying. And this program is will have is its its purpose is to offer opportunity to hear interviews by people with experience. And it's the whole broad range of human challenges that are associated with this kind of with this experience, which seems to be increasing in our society. So it was an honor. And I don't know whether I could say a pleasure, but it's certainly satisfying to play a part in that. And the produced programs will be out within the next few months. And that's and that's me. Mayor.
Well, like Councilor Dought and Southcott, I was out at the pickleball meeting. I had a good opportunity to talk with the board. And as a follow up, I met with board members of the seniors because they have some land. And I was following up. We were measuring out the land that was available there. And so there's now going to be ongoing discussions to see whether or not two courts would fit nicely in there. And it could be either a closed or an open facility. So that'll take some time. But we have some avid pickleball players at the senior center. And the consensus was that if they did this project, it would be considerably more members that would be interested in joining the seniors. Now I have about 250 members there or so. I'm encouraged by that. And Councilor Elliott and I attended the Chamber Awards Meeting. And it was very invigorating to see the energy of people that have managed to keep their companies, their storefronts financially sound during some pretty challenging time. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So I wanted to sort of express regret for some of the things I couldn't make this last little while. I I had the Community Action Team on my agenda list, but ended up getting overwhelmed with boat issues and couldn't make it. I ended up being out of town during our National Day of Mourning, which I normally attend because it's usually close to my house. So I, you know, I regret I could not make those events that I had on my calendar. Things I did do. On April 17, our therapeutic writing had their board meeting. And we got to discuss our future quite a bit. And we're going to be doing strategic planning very soon to try to shift to a more, we're some of our board members are aging, and we're looking to replenish the board a little bit. The pandemic has challenged our delivery model a little bit. And we we wanting to shift. We have some sustainability around how we retire our horses and get new ones and things like that that are have been challenging us as well. So we're going to try to address some of and the retaining enough funds to operate as expenses continue to rise and funding doesn't rise along with it. We need to figure that out a little bit. So we have tons of challenges for our organization, but I have all the confidence in the world that we will come out providing therapy with horses in the future. It's a wonderful organization. I'm pretty proud of them. April 19, I attended the B.C. Ferries Advisory Committee that was an online meeting. And they talked about how they're going to get back to meeting with the public. And because they took a bit of a hiatus, they studied everything and came up with a safer model, apparently. And let's see, I was gonna just go through. They have a process. They want to clear the backlog of priorities that have been happening in all of the communities. And in before, they they're going to pick some things they can do immediately. They're going to have a bit of a process where they come out and here, you know, start with a list of things that they think they have outstanding, maybe add some some others. Do prioritization along with the ferry advisory committees. They're going to take all of the chairs and put them on a committee so they can try to prioritize amongst all the, you know, the various regions. And then they are hoping to have, by the fall, a bit of a report to say where they stand as far as moving forward with the priorities of B.C. Ferries through the Ferry Advisories Committee. And they have a bit of a different model where they want co-chairs to help keep the meetings safe and things like that. So we at the Ferry Advisory Committee itself are discussing those things and having an upcoming meeting soon so that we can try to respond to what we're hearing from B.C. Ferries. So I did that. The Chamber of Commerce Awards Gala was wonderful. I thought some of those awards were very well deserved. One of note was Freshco's team's awards for their service-minded staff. And I hear about it all the time. And I do go to Freshco, and I agree their staff is very good at providing services. And the way they received that award really highlighted the why behind it. So the owner and manager brought his entire team. He put other people front and center, had his staff holding the award. He he really empowers his staff. And and it was clearly visible in the way they received that award. So I wanted to, you know, thank them for their their wonderful business and the way they provide service to the community and let them know, I see you, man. The right after that awards gala, just down the road, was the Wishing Well was having a musical event that night. And one of the bands had a man named Kelly Backs in the Black Smith and something was the name of his band. I can't remember. But yeah, that's right. Anyway, Kelly Backs is also a regional director for the Roberts Creek area. And I met him through Local Leaders United for the Community Action Team Province-wide Initiative. And so I tried to run down in there and see how his musical event was working out right after that gala because they were right next to one another. But he had finished singing by then. But everybody there seemed quite happy. So I think the event went quite well. And so tried to do that, didn't quite make it. The I did the Select Committee on City-Owned Lands recently. So we had a meeting of that, and it seemed to go quite well. We elected a new chair, which is now me. And that concludes my report.
When I haven't been calling lately. Standing Committee on City-Owned Lands. And we had our first meeting and it's the I'm sorry I missed the Select Committee meeting on Thursday as well as the ferry online meeting because I was out of town after my grandchildren daughter and also attending my other daughter's birthday, which happened to be on Earth Day. And we had some fresh prawns and whatnot. I'm going to share one story on that child looking after my grandchildren. My young grandchild grandson, he told me a great story. I'm sitting on the couch, went through quite elaborate. He asked me to repeat, did you hear me? He said, I fumbled the words and mixed it up a little bit for him. And lo and behold, my wife's sitting beside him. And he goes, he looks at my wife like this and then looks behind my ear and he says to my wife, he's even wearing his hearing aids. It was a great moment. I really appreciated that. So anyway, that's a side note. Other than land meetings, I just want to mention to staff that on the BarTech building that was mentioned in the paper recently, one of the business owners near that facility wants to hopefully rent some space to store trailers on site of that property. So they have mentioned to me they will be coming to talk to staff in that regard. So I'll just prepare you that somebody's coming to talk to you. The Harbor Committee, I'm happy to see that we have a date of our first meeting, Ms. LaForte, which I believe is May 7. And we'll have a meeting with the CIO and a meeting on Friday. And I'm hoping that I can convey that the terms of reference and a couple of other things should be on that agenda. And we can finalize that before sending it out next week before the meeting to get it out on time. So that's on the agenda. And that's it for me for now.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing nothing else on the agenda, we're going to questions. I do not see Mr. Glinsky. I wonder if he's on the phone. He's not. And speaking of which, is there anybody else on the phone or online? Mr. Seon? No, okay. Questions from yes, questions from the gallery. Is anybody here who wants to ask questions? Seeing none. Second, Councilor Maida, all in favor? unanimous.